Council to order Monday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. For the approval of the agenda, council would like to take this time for a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Doug Beal. Just a little bit of statistics here. Total duty hours for Mr. Beal, one thousand four hundred seventy-three hours. Total number of calls, one thousand eight hundred and five. Total training hours, three thousand one hundred and seventy-three. And twenty-two and three-quarter years of service. So just incredible statistics here. And so I'd like to take this time to respect Mr. Beal. Thank you. Thank you very much. Truly, uh, excuse me, truly a tragic loss for the community. And he will be sorely missed. Approval of the agenda, please. Counselor Norbury?
That the June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two regular council meeting agenda be adopted as presented?
Secondary, Counselor Lehman. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Adoption of the minutes, please. Three point one, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, special council meeting minutes. Counselor Lehman?
That the May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two special council meeting minutes be approved as presented?
Secondary, Counselor Norbury? Any errors or omissions? Staff? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Three point two, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, special council meeting minutes. Recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury?
That the May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two special council meeting minutes be approved as presented?
Secondary, Counselor Lehman? Any errors or omissions, counsel? Staff? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Three point three, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, special council meeting minutes. Recommendation, please. Counselor Lehman?
That the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two special council meeting minutes be approved as presented?
Secondary, Counselor Kirby? Any errors or omissions, counsel? Staff? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Three point four, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular council meeting minutes. Recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury?
That the May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular council meeting minutes be approved as presented?
Secondary, Counselor Lehman? Any errors or omissions, counsel? Staff? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Any business arising from these minutes, counsel? Staff?
Staff.
Thank you. No proclamations this evening, so delegations and petitions. Six point one, Tumbler Ridge Children's Center Society Board Members Cor De Mars, Angela Zimmer, Amanda Wams, Sticker, Melissa McQueen, Erin Puschersky, and Executive Director Raylene Bilecki to present to council on the current challenges TRCCS is facing. Welcome. Please. All set, Miss Boeys? Thank you.
Doug, do I need to speak directly into this?
No, I don't think so. We're okay.
Alright, hello. Thank you for having us here to present. We welcome the opportunity to discuss where we are at as a board with mayor and council. I'd like to introduce the following board members. We have Angela Zimmer, Melissa McQueen, our Vice President Amanda Wams Sticker, and our Executive Director Raylene Bilecki. Our plan is to go over who we are, our vision and our mission, the services that we currently provide, the statistics and the center challenges, and then finally the request for support for both immediate help and long-term support or alternative solutions. A little about us. We are the Tumbler Ridge Children's Center Society, and we are in our twenty-sixth year of operating. The TRCCS is a not-for-profit organization that provides licensed childcare and preschool programming. And currently, we are the only licensed childcare in Tumbler Ridge. It is operated by volunteer board that provides direction to the executive director, who in turn provides direction to our paid staff. Much of our operating budget for our organization comes through grants, program tuition, and fundraising. It is noted that the last few years, we are operating at a loss, and we will continue to operate at a loss due to the cost of licensed professionals and wage increases to recruit new staff and maintain our current staff. Our vision, we investing in our future through the development of our community's children. Our mission is to provide an essential and reliable service to the community with quality and innovative programs where children can safely learn and grow. Okay. Currently, we have three programs in total. We have our preschool program, the multi-age program, and our before and after-school care program. Our three-year-old preschool program runs Tuesdays and Thursdays, nine AM to eleven thirty AM. Our four-year-old preschool program runs Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, nine AM to eleven thirty AM. Dependent on staffing, one or both of these preschool programs may have to close in the fall semester. These programs are extremely beneficial for children who are transitioning to kindergarten in the next couple of years. They teach the children social engagement, emotional, and language skills. They also provide an avenue for early detection of learning and behavioral challenges. Our multi-age program is our only full-time childcare program, and it runs Monday to Friday, seven thirty AM to five thirty PM. Currently, it has eight spaces, which does include three infant-tother spaces. However, this infant-tother program is closing effective June thirtieth. With removing this program, it opens the amount of spaces available for ages three and up to a potential of sixteen spaces. We also offer before and after-school care program from Monday to Friday, seven thirty AM to eight fifty AM, then two thirty PM to five thirty PM. Our hours are restricted due to the ability of attracting, recruiting, and retaining qualified personnel. And without these qualified persons, we are not able to align the majority of the businesses in Tumbler Ridge. It should also be noted that we are closing for an additional summer month, July this year, due to staffing and the loss of our executive director, who is also an early childhood educator and required to be on site. Okay, Tumbler Ridge population statistics. This census from April two thousand and twenty-two notes that there are presently a hundred and fifty-five children ages zero to four in Tumbler Ridge. This means that the potential need for preschool and childcare programs will be increasing. This graph also shows that the largest age group is at an early retirement age of fifty-five to sixty-four, meaning the workforce of Tumbler Ridge will be switching in the next few years to the next largest population group, which is the ages twenty to thirty-nine. These are the ages where families are growing and are in the most need for childcare. Our current challenges. At present, the TRCCS is in a really difficult spot. We are losing qualified staff and due to shortages in the industry and challenges to remain a competitive employer, we are in dire straits. Without support, the TRCCS may have to close in the next year. The board is working towards increasing staff wages in hopes of retaining current staff and networking and advertising in hopes of attracting new staff. For the fall programming, we've had to close zero-to-three-age program, our infant-tother program, due to not having enough staff, as well as the economical stance having three spaces versus eight introduces our revenue coming in. The requests for support. The TRCCS is very open to exploring all options and opportunities with the district on both an immediate and a short-term basis. For the request for immediate support, we are requesting mayor and council to consider the following immediate support solutions. We would like janitorial services, bathrooms and floors only, provided daily after operating hours. The center requires much-needed renovations, which includes but is not limited to the sinks, cupboards, ceiling, and kitchen space. Please refer to the list provided to you guys just before this meeting for more details. We would also like mayor and council to consider providing recreation benefit passes to help with recruitment and retention of licensed TRCCS staff. For long-term support and alternative solutions, we are requesting that mayor and council consider having further conversations with TRCCS about the future of childcare services and support in Tumbler Ridge, including but not limited to the potential for the District of Tumbler Ridge to take over TRCCS, funding support for staff positions, staff retention and recruitment, support for the executive director role, could this become a district position? Funding requests from TRCCS for new or expanded spaces. Increased physical space would allow us to increase our student spaces. Educational support, bursaries, grant support recruitment to the early childhood educator positions. We would also like to suggest to mayor and council to consider working with the School District Number Fifty-nine to explore opportunities to support the residents of Tumbler Ridge and their need for licensed childcare. We are very open to how this support could work or could look, and are open to any suggestions. Good.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Cora. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Thank you for coming in. I've had the privilege of sitting in with your meetings recently, and it definitely paints a grim picture about the future for childcare. Not that, you know, not in the respects that you guys are not doing a good job, you're doing a great job, but, you know, the dangers moving forward if we don't provide assistance to childcare in Tumbler Ridge. So I do have a question in regards to your efforts in looking for staff. Can we get an update? Have you found anybody for the administration role or ECE roles or the ED role?
Uh, we have candidates, but qualifications for the ECE roles.
Follow-up?
Uh, I'll let everyone else in the chair.
Okay. Your questions, counsel? Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So you've said that you've increased salaries to your staff. Have you raised the rates for your daycare spaces as well to coincide with that?
We have a fee increase effective for the fall.
In the fall? Okay. Would that increase cover your staff increase in wages? Is it kind of working out?
We are under the seventy percentile in the province for childcare fees. And as a nonprofit led by a board of volunteers, like parent volunteers, and because of COVID the last few years, there just hasn't been a consistent increase in those fees. And when there is an increase, it's a small increase. So we've kind of been left in this wayside of even if we do an increase, with this, it would have to be a substantial amount to catch up with the rest of the province. And with the government, they do have caps on what you're able to increase per year. So we are approved for our increase of what we have, and of course, it will help, but it's not going to offset the recruitment of qualified staff.
Follow-up? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you. How are the wages compared to?
The province?
Yeah.
Uh, well, there's many different childcare models in the province. So there's nonprofits, there's private, in-home, with the school district. There's lots of different avenues. But typically are for, we have responsible adult rate at seventeen, starting at seventeen. That's no education. For an assistant, you have to have at least one course or up to one year, which is like twenty-two courses is for a full diploma in ECE. So yeah, there's a, there's different levels of qualifications. But for an assistant, we're looking at eighteen to twenty. And for an educator, we're looking at twenty-one, twenty to twenty-three. And then infant toddlers and other special qualification, twenty-three to twenty-five. The government does have wage enhancement right now. If you are a fully qualified ECE, then you have a four-dollar enhancement. But that's only for the qualified, not the assistants.
Okay. Follow-up?
Oh, it's kind of double-edged sword because you, you can't seem to pay enough, and you can't, you know, so it's a, you're losing on two counts here that are kind of important. You want to attract, but you're not allowed to pay them. Or you, well, the government says you can't pay them. So, or you're not allowed to raise, so, eh, I don't know. Do you switch to for-profit and see what happens, or could you do something like that?
There's lots of initiatives out there right now for childcare, and they want to see nonprofit or municipalities working together. So this new spaces grant, the childcare new spaces grant, that's what they want to see is a municipality partnership with a nonprofit. They have cut public stream, just like for private care, out of that funding stream in the previous round. So they are looking for more, they want, they want to reach that universal ten-dollar-a-day plan, right? So we have five more years.
Yeah. Three days.
Counselor Howe?
So I, I don't quite understand the, what you were talking about, about not being able to increase wages. Because there's some type of government thing there that says you can't increase it so much. Can you just explain that a little bit more so I can get a better understanding of that?
So there's nothing saying that we can't increase wages. It's the government saying that there's only so much you can do for fee increases. So wages are separate from that. However, the government does have a wage enhancement. So they are paying four dollars for qualified ECEs.
Counselor?
Just like, so sort of, with the fee increases then, what, what does that entail? Like you're only allowed like two percent per year or five percent per quarter?
Uh, so they, they have their own criteria. You kind of submit your criteria, and you say, this is what our reasons, and this is why. And because we were below that seventy percentile, they always said we need to increase it, and they allowed us to do our increase. They did approve our increase for what we asked, which was five percent on our fees.
Counselor?
To me, that's what the wages thing, I mean, I, this is, I'm new to this totally, but it's, it's, I've heard it in the community from multiple people that there's an opportunity here to re- raise the rates that they're charged out at for children or whatever. I understand now that there's a, you know, a mechanism in place for you not to be able to raise that rate as effectively as you want. Labor's in short supply everywhere, right? Like you guys know that, we know that, we live a great sleep, eat it every day. We're trying to come up with creative ways to get nurses into the community, doctors, dentists, whatever we could come up with. And I don't think that this is any different, you know? This is something that, that if, is there any flavor around, or is there any possibility? What I'm thinking at is, well, if the DTR was able to help increase wages in the short term, let's say, let's just say a couple dollars an hour on each position or something, is there any ability for you guys to have a steady increase in wage or in fees going forward for two years to recoup those costs to get you through in the short term? This is not a long-term solution. This is not something that I think that the DTR wants to get into. I certainly don't want to get into childcare. We've got enough on our plate as it is, and we won't do this very good. So it would be better off to keep it in volunteers' hands. So is there any ability to do something like that to recruit those members?
So the concern is like, we're, we're a business model, but led by a board of volunteers. So that business model sometimes doesn't always go in wayward of, you know, I'm proposing that we do a strategic plan for the next five years, and in that five years, you have your fee increases or your proposed fees increases, along with getting those wages up to where they should be. Because again, with the government, we don't know how long this four-dollar increase is going to be, right? Or for how much they're going to continue to invest in it with these grants and whatnot. So, I mean, we're welcoming any kind of support at this time. Because we do need the qualified staff. We do need to not only find them, but like get them here, right? So yeah, I think having a business model moving forward, like having a business plan of what that looks like strategically would be a key element to a partnership.
Follow-up, counsel?
Uh, and then just with increase the spaces, obviously, the more bodies you've got in there, the more money you can generate, that makes total sense to me. How are we limited on space at the, at the present time?
Uh, well, we have two classrooms, and we're running three programs. So our preschool and after-school care share the classrooms. And our multi-age program is just one classroom and multi-age license. We've always followed or tried to provide what the community has needed. And obviously, that showing the zero-to-three is of high need and high priority. So we've done that, we've tried that. But the staff qualifications, the care demand that they require, and being in that setting of eight is really difficult for one staff. And obviously, bringing in more staff, we're only, you know, putting ourselves in another deficit. But sometimes you need that extra support. So we're limited by the amount of spaces. And if we change that license and we take out the zero-to-three, and we have the three-to-five, then we are looking at doubling those spaces to sixteen spots.
Have enough room for that?
And so, yes, we, we can do, in one classroom fifteen, and the other classroom, we have twenty in the preschool, but we switch classrooms as well, so. So that eliminates the zero-to-three care, but it's allowing us to have a better revenue stream. And there's two staff in there with more support.
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. On the, on the topic of space, just an update, like I've been speaking with the school district, School District Fifty-nine about looking at options for space within the, within their network of infrastructure, right? Like, we only have limited space here, but maybe there's a classroom here, maybe there's opportunity to speak with Northern Lights College to, you know, get some of their space back. So we, while I'm speaking with SD Fifty-nine about options as well, so if it comes down to space, if we can find the bodies, that's the biggest thing. Can we find educators? That's the first hurdle. Second hurdle, well, I mean, maybe there, it's all one big minefield, and we have to jump at the same time. But, you know, there's, there's, you know, there's one piece of puzzle that we're, we're looking at, so there's an option.
And we're not quite equipped at this point for the infant-tother. We're providing it, but we don't have a nap room that's totally closed off. Like, we're making do with the space that we have and what we have available to us. So having a purpose-built infant-tother space would obviously, you know, you'd have those sandproof rooms where they can go nap at their schedule. You know, you're really following their routine opposed to trying to make them all kind of one, one.
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Couple things I wanted to speak on. Privatization. I know Counselor Lehman was mentioning it. There's, um, there's a ten-dollar-a-day.ca, they talk about the future of childcare. And this is sort of part of the mentality behind why the government's trying to offer these incentives to nonprofit organizations to provide this cheap childcare, that they're finding that the privatization model for childcare is, is just not working. The market isn't able to adapt in this, in this way. So they're actually recommending, and I can forward along, it was forwarded to me by our new Economic Development Officer, by the way, so it's not me. You know, I'm just, I'm just relaying the information, giving all the credit. But they're saying, and they're recommending now that it's up to nonprofit organizations and even municipalities to take on this role because this is something that, yeah, sorry, Barney. This is something that the, the market can't provide for, for our population. It's, it's up for nonprofits. Yes, Father?
Okay. Counselor Howe?
So, excuse my ignorance, but are you, are you saying that the provincial government makes a promise of ten-dollar-an-hour childcare, and then puts it back on the municipality to make it happen? Is that what you're saying?
Counselor Norbury?
So they're trying to push the ten-dollar-a-day model, and they're offering subsidies to organizations. Like, that's how the, the, that's the goal eventually, and that's how nonprofits run, is that they receive large subsidies from the government to offer a low-cost option, right? And that's, that's how you can pay so little for childcare.
Counselor Howe?
Now, I just throw something out here, I've been talking to people scattered around about it for a long time, and I know that they don't like this up at the museum, but I've always thought for a long time that they don't need the entire museum that they have up there. And I've always thought that that would make good sense for people at Tumbler Ridge who have put millions of dollars into that building, into that idea, that we're not really tracking trackways out there anymore. We're not really doing what we used to do years ago, and things need to progress and change. There's a fantastic playground outside that the DTR put in years ago. There's lots of outdoor space, there's bathrooms. We need to renovate it as it is. We've got some issues inside the building, we've had some safety issues that we've had to take care of. Would a building like that, not the entire building, but a portion of that building, help in some degree? If we were to totally change that, go right away from where you are, put you into a new building? I understand you still need more people, but would that give you the space to expand, to offer more? Is there any benefit to something like that?
So long as it meets all the licensing requirements. But we have explored that option before. We've gone there, we've looked at it. It needs major renovations.
It does, yeah. In order to accommodate a children's center, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions here. You mentioned dropping the zero-to-three doubles the amount of spaces available for the older kids. So then there are sixteen spaces available after June. When we were applying for grants for new childcare spaces, the government has us licensed for thirty-two spaces. So I'm just wondering how we've gone to fifty percent capacity, or why?
So our license of thirty-two is what our capacity is in the building at all times. So we usually have twenty for preschool program and eight for our multi-age program. And then for after-school care, we'd have the other X amount. So we're not, our license type is what, is how many spaces that we're allowed to have. And that is our ratios included in that. So for a multi-age, it's the one-to-eight, one staff for eight children. For being at two-group daycare, one staff for eight children. And then one staff with an assistant for sixteen children or eight plus.
Okay. Okay, so, so that sixteen spaces was just for that one program then?
Yeah, so the reason we don't have sixteen spaces is because we're operating a multi-age program. So that multi-age, we can only have eight spaces. We can't add an additional eight kids and have another staff. That's not how that program works, because you have that high-care zero-to-three age category.
Right. Okay, yeah, it was just confusing to me as far as what the government was saying that we had available, and then what the children's center is reporting, what is available. It, it didn't seem to add up there, so I was a little bit confused on that. You had mentioned that you're operating at a loss at this time. I'm, I'm looking at the profit loss sheet, and I don't see a loss. I'm just curious.
Two thousand twenty, we got, oh, some cylinder. So we got quite a fair amount of COVID funding over the last three years. So that's the reason our financials are looking better than they are. There's still funds that need to be spent from this year, and then we have funds already for our fall semester.
And the COVID funding would be captured under grants? Or where would that be captured in revenue?
Yeah. I think that's, yeah, the fifty-one-twenty.
The grants? Okay. So, um, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. We're, we're operating at a loss at this time, but we're focusing on increasing wages in order to attract.
Retain.
And retain. Both, probably. And retain, both probably. Okay. There's no doubt that childcare is certainly a pillar of the community. I know for a fact, I'm sure we have lost people just for the fact that they weren't able to get childcare. This is a, a serious issue, 100%. And, and I do believe that we're in a bit of a crisis at this point. Especially hearing all of the children that have been born over the last two years. We are certainly going to have to plan for those kids, but also for current needs as well. I, I really don't think space is going to be an issue. I'm sure we're going to be able to find space. It's, it's the people to, to fill that space is, is what the main concern is. I'd certainly like to offer a tour of any potential educators. You know, something very small, but we were successful, council was successful in, in attracting a new doctor to the community this year, simply by a tour. And so I'd, I'd certainly like to offer that to you. All of the mayor and council would like to do that. I think, you know, it's a very small gesture, but it also shows the commitment of the community. And certainly could answer any questions that they may have at that time as well. Basically throwing out the red carpet for, for any potential educator as well. As far as ECE spaces in the schools, I know the government has been kind of focused on, on creating new spaces. Do you see that as a potential solution moving forward? Or is it just a matter of trying to attract them to the community?
Well, right now we're in a shortage of ECEs all across the province and Canada. So that's why they have all these initiatives out there. And I think a lot of the private sector is kind of closing doors. If they're not following suit of the government's $10 a day plan and, and, you know, signing on board with that, then they're kind of, they're not left with any funding streams. So I think a lot of the private sector is kind of closing out. And so that's kind of even causing a bigger barrier with the qualification aspect. There is dual credit programs now with the high school that they're offering. There's different bursaries and things like that. But it does take, you know, a special kind of person and temperament to be working with children. So it has to have that genuine interest and desire to want to go through for that. And not always do when people get in there is that what they're expecting or what they're thinking. So it's short-lived or, but yeah, it's, uh, I can see it being a challenging for a while, but definitely focusing on retracting and retaining what we have and running the programs that we can. And then hopefully also being in partnership with the grant. Come on up.
Thank you. Councillor Howe?
Just to staff, I'm looking at their payroll expenses. It looks like $88,000 for August 21 to March 22, is that right? So what? Is there anything preventing us from doing something like chipping in 10% DTR? Like we were to give them 10% in addition to the wages that they have to let them spend? Is there any reason that we couldn't do that?
Ms. Torvald?
Thank you, Mayor, to the council. I don't think there's any reason why you couldn't do that. Of course, we would have to come through as a resolution of council.
And it would likely be a grant function possibly or?
Possibly, yeah, possibly. I'll defer to this tag.
I think probably not coming from our wages, but something where it could be added as a grant.
Follow-up councillor?
Yeah, just again, so I'm not quite following this. So there's five months not, not logged on here, correct? Is there, is there a reason for that? Is it just that was the most often date you had or?
Latest.
Okay. Do wages change much during the summer?
No, well, we won't have any progress. We usually operate at a loss during July. We have it for the families, but honestly, like we, we have the eight spaces and then we have the staff to pay. But this summer we will be closed. So yeah, usually the staff, like we don't need as many staff in the summer, so it would go down, but.
And when is your year-end?
July 31st.
July 31st. That's why it's August, March, okay. Thank you. Follow-up councillor?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just spitballing here right now, but you know, like if you had, you know, 10% wages on that's like $8,000, let's say it's even 10% on $100,000, so $10,000. Am I off on something there?
No, I'm sorry.
So like, like if you had that additional $10,000 for a year or two to get by, this, this is what I'm looking at. Give you $10,000 a year, $12,000, whatever number it would work out to be. Is there any way that you can catch that up by increasing the amount that you're charging? Like apply for something to the government every year, say we're that bad. We're in that bad that we had to go to our, our municipal government to go get an, an interest-free loan or, or money, whatever, grant $10,000. Is there any way you could utilize that to leverage an increase in wages or increase in fees to, to the folks that are paying?
Yes, I mean, definitely the funds will help with that, but at this point we do need help with the resources. And we're, we're just kind of like a society, but we need that support. So we're needing the outreach and we can definitely, you know, increase our wages. We already, we already planned to do that for September. So that's a great start, but I guess there's, there's more support needed.
And I would assume that gaining those extra eight spaces will increase your revenue as well, so.
And allow for more flexibility for part-time, full-time drop-in.
Councillor follow-up?
And then is there anything that the DTR can take on? Like the, the stuff that needs to be fixed in the childcare center? I think that that stuff that we should get fixed regardless. I think at the deals, we give them the childcare center for a dollar, right? Again, we give lots of buildings for a dollar and we're responsible to fix them and maintain them. So that stuff shouldn't be done, should be just reported to maintenance there and getting done, but. Sorry, I lost my train of thought on where I was going with that, but.
Okay. Councillor Lehman and Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, that's what I was going to ask. Who normally or how does these repairs normally get done? And there seems to be a lot of smaller stuff here that shouldn't take too long to fix.
Um, so we have done, like maintenance will come and repair the few things that we need. We have replaced the children's bathrooms, we've gotten our own toilets and did the floors in there. District did help with installing and putting that stuff in. And we've also done our own carpets. But these are bigger kind of asks, I guess. And for the fact that we've been in a limbo of grant and are we moving or do we have another space? It's just been kind of, okay, well, wait and see, we'll wait and see. And it just never really gets pushed forward.
Follow-up?
I'm just, I'm wondering about options to get it, you know, done maybe a little bit sooner, a little bit quicker or?
We are closed over summer. We are closed over summer. I need just to clear that up too. It's DTR who's been, or like the, the district who's been pushing and holding off because of funding as opposed to the childcare center. Funds trying to re-engage on getting.
On the repairs? Okay. Councillor Norbury and Kirby, then Howe?
Thank you, Mayor Burtrand. You know, I'm, I'm glad we're, we're already at the try to look for solutions phase. I think that's where we're at. You know, we're talking about monetary to hopefully keep, you know, retain staff, recruit staff. You know, going back to your request for support with the janitorial services, the recreation pass benefits. Yeah, like do you think both of these could aid in say like the, the mental health of your, of your staff? You know, relieve one burden from them, you know, during, during their workday, you know, to, to keep them a little bit farther back from the breaking point? Would you say that's a fair assessment of why you're coming in for the, the territorial services?
Um, yeah, I mean, we have done all of our own janitorials since the get-go. And at this point, it's like, you know, we just need to focus on taking care of the kids and getting that part done. And I feel like that should be the educator's role. And at the end of the day, yeah, it's another, you know, it's another chore to do on our, you know, we're continually cleaning throughout the day. So that would just be a huge weight lifted off of our staff and allow us to focus on the important things of the programs and the children and not have to have that extra at the end.
Follow-up?
And then the recreation pass benefits, you know, you would just be looking for the licensed childcare workers. So would that be like an ECE qualification and higher? What kind of threshold were you thinking there? Or were you just, were you looking at anyone we can get employed at the, the children's center could be qualified?
Yeah, I think we're looking at all of our employees, like we have, what, five of us?
Councillor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Burtrand. Northern Lights College, are they offering ECE programs at, at this time? You know, that could be an option is working at Northern Lights College. Even have a hands-on working, functioning daycare at a teaching daycare. Just maybe to take over, you know, just to train people up. I'm sure they have spaces over there. I know we have instances where there's teachers at the high school that are needing childcare. When you have nurses needing childcare, it'd be very, be very well-located rather than up at the museum. But, you know, maybe working with them. We also do through the district, we do scholarships. We could start looking at scholarships that are, are really directed to the early childhood educator, education program. Those are kind of the ideas I have. I, I, for one, as far as janitorial goes, every job I've ever worked, you always had, that was part of your job. I don't know if taking that over would be something I would be for. I know it takes load off, but it's also a good teaching tool for people that are learning a new job. That it's just not, there's more to a job than just the job. I, that, that's the old school in me. It's, and as far as the benefit, the, like the facility passes and stuff, I, I really don't want to get into that realm yet until we get to really know what we need to do to get people to come in. Start off somewhere else first because we've, we've opened the door to this. And I feel like that if, if we start here at the daycare, then it could be into the, to the high schools. And it, it'll just be, I don't see an end to it. I'd like to find a better solution because people have to pay for childcare. And that's one thing I think is getting the fees to where they should be. Getting it, people educated and getting people into the facility. I think you guys have done amazing over the years. And I think taking out that zero to three, that's a hard one to, to swallow because there's such a need for it. But then gaining those extra spaces shows that you're on the right track. Previously in the elementary schools, we had, was onsite for your after-school program. So that was easy because then you'd have maybe some other staff there. Maybe finding high school students that could take on those kids that are a little bit older that aren't, you know. And then we also have our own program at the community center. And hopefully that doesn't kind of hurt your facility because we offer a summer program that allows for, for childcare. So I, I think as a district yourselves, we do a lot. Like there's options, but I think I've read here that there's working groups and working committees. I think that's a good start. But looking at Northern Lights College, I think would be good and then just adding scholarship. And then I think getting this, some of these renovations done in July could be, you know, have someone go in and look in so that work can be done when it's closed. Like be ready to work when it's closed. Some of those.
Yeah, absolutely. I think Northern Lights College would be a good option. There's a perfectly for good, perfectly good classroom sitting up there that aren't being used. And, you know, we've offered Northern Lights College multitude of, of options that could possibly work here. And this is just another one, so it's certainly a conversation starter there. Councillor Howe?
Yeah, the, the recreational benefit passes can be, again, could be a short-term solution. Councillor Kirby, like it could be, you know, once you get fees up to a point where we're comfortable or they're comfortable or they've got enough money to do it, it could be a shorter-term thing. I, I'm in support of it, I think that's a great idea. I don't know that I would give every employee that. I think that there needs to be incentive to shoot for a year ECE. And that's what I'd be looking at. But I think they're looking for something, and, and scholarships idea, great idea, but that's longer term. I'm like, right now, how do we fix stuff right now? And to me, throw money at it. That's honestly, give them money, see what they do with it. But there has to be a function in there that they are going to increase the fees. So at some point we can not have to be paying that money out. Do two-year term, something along those lines that they can increase. Because to me, that's where it's at, they need to be able to increase their fees and they're held back by some reason. And need to get it there. So, and, and I talked to two teachers, two separate teachers came and talked to me about it. And I was shocked that they're like, we're actually going to leave Tumblr Ridge because we don't have childcare. I'm like, you kidding me? You can't find anybody, you can't find, you know, we have no parents in town, we've got no family, we're leaving, we're going back to Ontario. And when that starts happening, and I've heard it through the nurses were saying the same thing, we heard that in the. So this is as important as any, people can look after their youngsters, I get it. But, you know, if you don't have anybody in town and, and the for-profit thing doesn't seem to be working, which I would way, way prefer that somebody open one up, but nobody's doing it. Like, you know, and so how, how do we get through the short-term and, and, and attract people to come to the community and want to move here and live here? I don't know, it's got to be fixed quickly. And, and I, I hate putting out a crutch that's, that becomes constant. But to me, if it's, it's a short-term deal, it's a solution where we say, we're going to do this for a year or two years, give you the money, increase your wages, we don't put any more money in after that and, and see where that gets us? I, I don't know. That, that's my, my thought on it. What, what were we willing to give nurses? You know, we had voted here to do $1,000 a month per nurse and that passed. Right, that's what we voted to give nurses to get as a bonus, as a benefit from the DTR. We couldn't manage to get it go through Northern Health. But for us to look at $1,000 a month for this entire organization, it's $12,000 a year. That's more than the wages that I was earlier suggesting. To me, that's, that's a pretty easy thing for us to do. And the caveat that they have to be able to increase their fees to cover it in a few years.
Okay, thank you. Is there an opportunity? You know, I certainly understand the situation as far as the zero to three service goes and, and how, how you were trying to adapt and it really didn't fit the model of the building that you were in. Is there an opportunity within your license to move that zero to three program to a different space? But still operate in the space that you're in?
You can have, we can be under the umbrella of the children's center. You just need a site manager, which would be a fully qualified ECE. But it's, it's possible, another license.
To me, that makes more sense is to find the zero to three's own space so that it can be tailored to that program, right? Instead of trying to adapt in all, all, I just wasn't sure if it was possible within your license. Councillor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Burtrand. What's, what's the status for September? Are we going to have anything open? I, I know, I'm sorry, I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions, but I think it needs to be said. Are you in that serious of a spot where you may be closed September?
We cannot find it. We can offer the group daycare program with the 16 children with our returning staff. And potentially an after-school care, like before and after-school care. But preschool, we need an educator and an assistant to run and a manager.
Okay. Follow-up?
Yeah, I guess back to your guys' organization. How's the board feeling? Are you, are, spring it on, yeah, I'm sorry. But moving forward, is the board able to stay on and continue serving while we work through all of these, these issues?
That we have to. Because all of us are parents that are working with children.
We're all under the pressure and we know what this town needs and we're trying very hard to provide it. But if we can't find the staff, unfortunately, it is going to be, it is what it is. And then that's more of the working force, I'm going to stay home to take care of the kids.
Absolutely. It's a huge barrier. Councillor?
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around in a very tough situation. I've been a part of some boards recently that, yeah, it's, we're going through some changes. I do have a question to staff and that's in regards to a suggestion that was made in the presentation. And that was assisting the executive director and if the DTR could provide assistance there. How would that affect the, the, the society and its board? Right, it seemed, I'm, it seems a little bit of an interesting situation where we have a paid district employee on a nonprofit organization that's governed by a board. How would that work and is it even possible?
Ms. Torvald?
Thank you, Mayor and to the council. That is something that we would need to sit down and discuss a little further and to, you know, check out all the legalities or whatever. Those sorts of things, so is that just something we can explore? Explore.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Howe?
The COVID money that the government gave us, we've got like $460,000-ish left. Oh, right? Roughly? Okay, 400,000? Is that something that we can utilize? Sorry. Less than that? Is, is that something that we can utilize for this? That, that amount of money? Because that is in purgatory as far as I know, but.
Ms. Torvald.
Again, we're kind of probably on the spot here. I haven't looked back at COVID for a while, but it's something I will probably check.
Yeah, that's an interesting question.
COVID got us here, so.
Counselor Norbury.
Thank you. On the same side of that, again, from our EDO, it's all on her. But there's opportunities, I think, with the McKenzie Trust coming through with the, the, the Care Recovery Money, right? You know, creating opportunities for employment. I mean, this is a long-term solution. This isn't a short-term. This is, you know, I'm starting on my talk already for our later discussion. We're looking, right, we're looking at multi-phase approach. We have to do short-term, medium, long-term. And this is potential medium, long-term solution. But, you know, there's opportunities there as well, I think, if we're looking at solutions. Yeah.
A question to staff, Ms. Torvald. The required repairs list that we've been handed tonight. Do you see any issues with this as far as the lease goes? I haven't read the lease, so I'm not exactly sure what the Children's Center Society is responsible for and what we're responsible for. This to me looks like regular maintenance. So Ms. Torvald, does any of this on this list pose a red flag in regards to the lease agreement?
Mayor, I don't believe so. And it's already been stated here tonight that the, the repairs and whatnot has been found on hold because we weren't sure of the grant or not. So it's kind of like everything was in limbo. So, but no, this, this definitely will be, look at this list.
Yeah, and just reading over the list here. I, I'm kind of shocked that some of this has been pushed in regards to finding out if we get a, a grant for a new building. Like exposed insulation under the sink, that seems to be child height level under the sink. That's kind of ridiculous as well as, or was it the wetness? Oh yeah, under the sink cupboard has wet, damp, moisture smell. That, in my opinion, would lead to mold and not a safe space for children in a childcare center. So I thank you very much for bringing this to our attention and we'll ensure that that gets taken care of. Just one other question. You know, reading over the, the package here tonight prior to the meeting, it, it appears that the board is at wits' end in regards to the future. And, you know, by, by reading that a possible solution is that the district to Tumblr Ridge to take over the society. I'm just wanting to know on the board's perspective, why you felt the need to offer that as a, as an option?
I think we are just open to pretty much anything.
Any and all options. It is our understanding that the district used to run the daycare. It was their daycare and they didn't want it anymore. Therefore, the society was created. Parents stepped up to the plate and here we are today. And they did okay for a few years and now we're at a loss. And we're at our wits' end with wages, keeping people here, and now we need help.
I, I think a big reason as well is like, you know, it's been very, we're, we're all parent volunteers. And there's a lot of expertise within the district and professionals within the district who would be able to, you know, potentially better strategize or bring in additional ideas to make a more successful option for licensed child.
Sure.
First, coming to our board meetings has been awesome because it does show that you guys are at least interested and that gives us a glimmer of hope.
Oh, absolutely. There, there's certainly, this is, had been top of mind for me for over a year now. It's, as I said previously, this is a pillar of a community, just like healthcare and education. So without childcare, we will not have people in Tumblr Ridge.
Absolutely. As Bill Howell once said, that we're having problems getting any kind of workforce into town. Well, childcare is the root cause.
Absolutely, absolutely. I completely agree there. Please know that we will support you in some way. We just need to work out a lot of details and I really appreciate the information that you brought to us. And thank you very much for your time this evening. Any final thoughts or questions, Counsel, Counselor Howell?
I'd just like to point out, this is a rarity that we ever speak with any group that comes in for 50 minutes. Usually you're allotted 15 minutes. So if that, hopefully that gives you some idea that we're serious about this as well. We want to get some, some going here and get figured out.
Absolutely.
Not talk action.
I agree. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. The frustrating thing is not being able to get staff. And that's going to be a tough thing to overcome. And I like, we can talk all we want, but if, if those people aren't available, then we're in a sad state and we are. Because it's the same with nurses and doctors. You, they're just not there. And either they're, you know, they're just, I hope they're retired or whatever it is. It's just, there's such a drastic shortage in all these fields that we really need. And to catch up is going to take quite a while. And I don't know, like, how do you find a Band-Aid solution in between? Because you need to have the training in order to be able to work in these childcare centers, but you, you don't have the people. So it's frustrating because you know what you need, but you can't get it.
Exactly.
You know, it may not matter how much money you're willing to pay. And you can only pay so much, but it, it's, it's frustrating.
Yeah, absolutely. Final thoughts, Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. And I, I'd say to Counselor Lehman, we have the roadmap in front of us. How, right? Everywhere, everywhere in our region is, is having a horrible shortage with healthcare. Tumblr Ridge in comparison, we're staying afloat barely. And that's because of the, yeah, thank you. And that's because of the incentives that we've been offering, right? Counselor Howell's saying the exact same thing. We've got to throw, we have to provide funds, we have to provide support, whatever that needs, however that looks. That's how we've been able to stay afloat and that's what I think is our solution.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kirby, please.
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Just a final note is, you know, sitting on that board, oh, it must have been 20 years ago already. I can remember when it went from the, the district running it to like helping in the hiring of our, you know, after Stacy left and getting that daycare running again and trying to find staff. And it's just that early education workers do not get the credit that is due to them. So $10 a daycare is great for the person who needs the daycare, but they're not giving it to where they really need it. And that's to the professionals. And, and that's, you know, is just starting that voice is that that's where it's got to go. Because they've got to be recognized for what they do. And that's developing that young, that young mind from zero to four is, is a very important age. So yes, we will definitely support you guys.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, recommendation, please. Counselor Norbury.
All items in the June 6th, 2022 consent agenda be moved for information.
Seconder. Counselor Kirby. All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Any issue, any items council would like to lift? Counselor Norbury?
Uh, 7.2.
For discussion, seconder. Counselor Kirby? Favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd just like to thank Mr. Schwab, well, these Schwabs, in writing to council. I, I don't know if, uh, these are the teachers that Counselor Howell spoke to, but they were one of the pair that I spoke to and yeah, they're going to leave. That's simple. Their teaching's in a huge demand right now. They can literally anywhere and, and teach. So we need to, it's how like that. And I'd like, I'd like to, like if we could send a letter and, and acknowledgement that we received and we're working on it.
Ms. Torvald, need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'll make a recommendation that staff create a reply to Mr. Ryan Schwab regarding childcare concerns. Thanking him for his letter and we are doing our best.
Actively pursuing options?
As amended.
Seconder. Counselor Lehman, discussion. Counselor Howell?
Just one thing, yeah, these, these are the teachers that I was talking to. But, you know, another point with Ryan is Ryan, these people have become great in the community. Ryan is not only a teacher, he's also a referee for minor hockey. And that, that's the stuff, like as they live here and they start to build roots and do different things, when you pull those people out and all that stuff goes with it, it starts to affect all kinds of other avenues. So minor hockey is another one of those things. It's super tough to get referees. And this guy stepped up and helped out. Like, you know, it's one of those things that there's more to it than just on the surface, so.
I agree. Any other comments, questions? Called question, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Any other items from June 6th consent agenda? Counselor Norbury?
Point three.
For discussion, seconder. Counselor Lehman, all in favor? Carry, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
It's a childcare meeting, that's what we're having. You know, again, thank you to Ms., Ms. Butters for your letter. I don't think we need to send her a letter and, and thanking her for sending this. But again, another example of a great professional we have in our community that, you know, is really going to affect a family and our operations in the community without childcare.
I agree. Yes, thank you, Ms. Butters. Any other comments, questions? Okay, any other items council would like to lift from the consent agenda? Uh, I'd actually like to lift 7.5 for discussion, seconder. Counselor Kirby, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. I was just looking for status, Ms. Torvald. Has BC Hydro, has this program been moving along? And what communication have you received in this regard? They are talking about installing this year, so just curious what your communication has been like.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, through the council. So this is now been made public. We've known for a while that this was coming. And so they have, now we're rounded in the open. So we are, we had a meeting last week, I believe it was, with BC Hydro representatives. And there, we are looking at a spot over beside the Children's Center in that parking lot over there. And so they'll be coming up and scouting it out. And we will receive information, more information coming in as we move along.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Howell?
You know what's funny about the electric vehicle thing, especially in the DTR? Is we went to the government about licensing ATVs for the roads and golf carts and stuff like that. They shut us down immediately. You know, should we maybe look at writing a letter to open that again to ask about golf carts on our roads in Tumblr Ridge? I mean, you know, electric bikes are becoming a huge thing. And there's lots of people with carts around. Is that something that me want to go down that road again and ask the government? Like you're looking for these creative ways to get people to travel around with low carbon or zero carbon? You know, we presented a solution and they absolutely did nothing to help us by letting us in the community. Like, that's back on the government, that's directly from the government. So is there any flavor around council to look at that again? Or you just tapped on resources to do something like that?
From the last communication, I remember the golf cart program was a pilot program that they ran in Chase, I believe it was, Chase BC. And from the communication I had, they didn't want to run that program again until all of the results were analyzed or whatever it might be. So there wasn't any flavor to continue that pilot program. I, I did mention that Tumblr Ridge would like to pilot it again, but it, there wasn't any flavor. ATVs, I think we did have a communication with our new sergeant in regards to that. And she was going to look into that because I know we did have some opposition by our RCMP sergeant previously. And so I think we could probably follow up with Sergeant to see where, or if she's found out any more information in that regard. Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Um, what was the, this charge time on this that's coming into the community?
Ms. Torvald, are you aware?
Yes, 15 to 20 minutes. Oh, it's a fast charge, huh? It's a good one. Yeah, I think it will be two. It'll be two? Two minutes.
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Um, it's great that they're finally building the infrastructure up here because it's so popular in major metropolitan areas. People are going back to petroleum cars because they can't get into these charge stations. There's, there's just these massive lineups, right? So, I mean, if we want to see any sort of tourism, I think it's important to have those things. And like, you know, I'm thinking about my next vehicle purchase and it might be an electric vehicle. I love technology and the one thing that would hold me back is that, well, I can't drive to Dawson without charging and, or if I want to go to a visitor center and, and wait eight hours, it's not feasible, right? So you need to have these, these supercharge stations and, and it opens up.
Yeah, I think I did hear the new Chevy electric vehicle is up to 600, 650 kilometers now on the charge. So the, the technology is moving in the right direction. Okay, anything else on the consent agenda, council? Moving on to bylaws, 8.1, mail ballot authorization and procedures, bylaw number 711, 2022. Report from acting CAO dated June 6th, 2022, seeking adoption of the mail ballot authorization and procedures, bylaw number 711, 2022. Recommendation, please. Counselor Howell?
As presented.
Seconder. Counselor Lehman, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. 8.2, election and ascent voting procedures, bylaw number 710, 2022. Report from the acting CAO dated June 6th, 2022, seeking adoption of the election and ascent voting procedures, bylaw number 710, 2022. Recommendation, Counselor Howell?
Also, as presented.
Ms. Torvald, is that sufficient or do we need to read it? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Seconder. Counselor Kirby, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. 8.3, fees and charges amendment, bylaw number 714, 2022. Report from the deputy director of corporate services dated June 6th, 2022, seeking first three readings of the fees and charges, bylaw amendment number 714, 2022. Recommendation, please. Counselor Lehman?
The fees and charges, bylaw number 714, 2022, be read a first time.
Seconder. Counselor Kirby, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Counselor Lehman?
The fees and charges, bylaw number 714, 2022, be read a second time.
Seconder. Counselor Kirby, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Counselor Lehman?
The fees and charges, bylaw number 714, 2022, be read a third time.
Seconder. Counselor Kirby, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. New business, 9.1, childcare discussion. A report from Counselor Norbury to discuss options or ideas on how to increase childcare spaces in Tumblr Ridge. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So I wrote this report in the form of a more of a discussion topic as I was hoping to bring it forth on our PPC meeting last month. But, you know, here we are, the cat's out of the bag. And we've heard it from the Children's Center, what the situation's looking like. So, um, yeah, I'm here to talk about options. First and foremost, I would, I think we're at the point where we need a liaison to the Children's Center as we may be providing more and more support to them. I think it's important to keep the lines of communication back and forth. And I think the next biggest thing and one of the most critical thing I think is we made, we need to make a childcare working group task force with district support in terms of staff support. So like a secretary, you know, I've been speaking with Ms. Finnegan under, under the direction of Ms. Torvald, so we're not, you know, off the side here. Because I think she has, she definitely has some great ideas. definitely has some great ideas in what we can do to aid in childcare in the community. And in preliminary talks, we've already come up with, I think, some solid ideas to bring back to council. And so my idea with that is, you know, we get staff support, we get all the, we get the users involved. SD 59 is interested in sitting down at the table, because they potentially can offer space. In other areas, they have contracted out to YMCA's to offer childcare. They're looking at, I believe, the primary age children, so like six and up who are in school, to provide that seamless care, so like that's their responsibility now that they're in the Ministry of Education. But having them involved, so we don't cross over in terms of services offered. Having the children's center as well, interested, involved in that conversation, you know, we could try and get some other people involved in the community, but the idea would be to come up with, we can have two parts, an organization that can run, take the ball, and advertise how we can solve childcare in the community, right? We can advertise that you can take a 10-day course that can help you open a day home, right? We can have, you know, a point or multiple points of contact that people can go to and say, okay, I want to help, what can I do? I want to open a day home. Well, they can go to, say, Town Hall, EDO, you know, whoever. Well, these are your next steps, right? Like, we can't do it for them, but we can help direct them where they can go, and we kind of need that recognizable central hub for people to branch off to, right? But with that, and then a part of that, if we can come up with other creative solutions through this working group, we can present to council initiatives or ideas that do cost in resources, right? Potential money, or we want to create a overall strategy for childcare in the community, we need to apply for a grant, what have you. So I think it's, we want to, I think it's important to have that and group, is the way to do that.
I agree. Any other comments, questions? This is certainly a major issue for our community. Without childcare, we're not going to have working parents, unfortunately, so I'd like the idea of the council liaison position. Would you be willing to sit in as that person? Counselor Norbury?
Yes, Mayor Bertrand. I brought a lot of these suggestions in there with myself in mind. I mean, I hope that I've shown my willingness and interest, and like, I've been attending the meetings on my own behalf, and I personally don't need childcare, but at the same time, I'm around that group, I have a good relationship with the children's center, I'd like to be that point of contact.
And experience as well, yeah. I'd like to move, the council creates a council liaison position for the Tumbler Ridge Children's Center Society, and Counselor Norbury be that liaison. Seconder, Counselor Kirby, discussion? Counselor Howe?
Is it more than just the childcare center, though?
How so?
Like, you're talking just the childcare center, that's what he's the liaison for?
The Children's Center Society, yeah.
That one thing.
That group, yes. With option in mind to possibly create a working group as well, I think that is a good idea, good suggestion, because this certainly isn't a one-answer fix. I think we need to get very creative in this sense, not only to try and build capacity within the children's center, but also hopefully privately as well. We're going to need all the space we can get, both publicly and privately, in my opinion. Counselor Howe?
Yeah, just like thinking if Chris was the appointment man on this group, it would be more beneficial for him to be, you know, kind of our liaison for the group instead of just for the, for instance, if he reaches out to the school district, right? He's not doing that on behalf of the council at that time, that's not what we're asking them to do, right? But if we put him in charge of the group, then he could, you know what I mean?
The working group, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. That's kind of what I'm hoping for in the next motion.
Okay.
Counselor Norbury?
And that's my goal here, Counselor Howe, in that I'm hoping to take on both initiatives. To be honest with council, I may be, I mean, I may be coming back and saying, look, I have to cut a couple of things off of my other initiatives, but this is, this takes precedent, and I think it makes sense to have one person in all the positions, right? Rather than, I mean, we could potentially add more people on the working group, working group, whatever, but it does make sense that whoever's with the children's center is also involved with the working group, because this, I think, is a large project.
I agree. Any other comments, questions? Called question on the liaison, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Counselor Norbury, do you think that this childcare spaces working group could be captured within the Building Healthy Communities Committee, that you chair? Or do you think we need to put that committee on hold for a bit until, and create a new working group specifically for childcare? Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I think it needs to be a separate organization, because I think the terms of reference will be a little different, and the, I think this is a more targeted approach to childcare versus community health. In terms of the Building Health Communities Committee, we have a lot of healthcare professionals, smart people, incredibly smart people, but I think we need to look at people who have experience in childcare, and to not cloud the waters. If we can have X amount of people, that their experience is just childcare or dealing with children, hopefully we can come up with ideas.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'm hoping to get like a feel for council on this, in like, we could go, I think we do need staff support, and I'm curious on what council's opinion is on providing that support in terms of, I'm thinking a secretary, so that could be just a, doesn't need to be a higher level of staff, but then also, you know, our economic development officer, right? So we're looking at two potential pieces from the district coming into our organization. What's council's thoughts on that? If they're open to that idea?
Counselor Kirby? Oh, sorry, Curtis?
Looking at getting this down from the district of Tumbler Ridge to be on here as well as district, employees, we aren't even, why don't we just think about taking that over again when it used to be? And then, because that would try to alleviate the problem of the waiting, because that is something that you're trying to, you know, you try to session, what they have to do benefits. Now's another big concern is, if a nonprofit, you don't have benefits, maybe helping, or changing people for longer term.
Yeah, I agree with you, Counselor Majinsky. I think that certainly is an option to explore. I believe Ms. Torval was going to look into that a little bit more as far as legalities go, and possibly what it was in the past, so that's certainly an option that this potential working group could bring forward as a recommendation, I think. Like everyone has said, everything is on the table at this point, so it certainly, it certainly is an option to explore more. Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I, depending on what the capacity of the staff is, I think they do need some support. Like, my concerns are how the fee structure kind of went to the wayside, like, why that wasn't, you know, why that didn't go up over the years, that just doesn't really make sense to me at this time, and I haven't read enough or talked enough, so, you know, if they need help on that, because a board, it isn't an easy job, but yet you're still running a business, even though it's nonprofit, but I don't know if that means our financials department, or like secretary taking minutes, is that what you're thinking, or?
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So my goal for this is not to work on the children's center. They can be a part of this, we can look at, they can be a part of this strategy, but my thoughts is childcare in Tumbler Ridge. So my thought is day homes, licensed childcare in the community, the children's center, they are a part of that, but they are only a piece of the puzzle, not the entire solution. So this is looking at childcare in Tumbler Ridge, so it's not so much we're going to go and we're going to work with the children's center. The children's center is going to work with us in guiding us in recommendations, the district recommend, and this group, in recommendations on how we can just improve childcare options in our community. They're one piece, but I think there are other options, like, yeah, private day homes, you know, what have you.
It's more so to increase capacity within the community? Yeah, okay. You following?
Yeah, now that I understand it, it's not just our daycare, so you'll have major industry involved, Kanuma, someone from mining?
Counselor Norbury?
It's a good idea.
Major employer.
And a major attraction piece for that employer as well, for every employer in the community, as well as healthcare. Counselor Norbury, did you want to make a motion in regards to the working group?
Sure. I'll make a motion that, oh, there's a few things that I want to do here. I think we first need to start with, starting at childcare spaces working group. So I'll make a motion that the DTR form a childcare spaces working group, and direct staff to create a terms of reference for council's approval, so I guess a report.
Seconder, Counselor Kirby, discussion? Counselor Norbury?
I think to give a little bit of direction to staff versus just, hey, go do this thing. So I think with that, the idea that I have is kind of nebulous. Maybe I can work with staff.
That's a big word.
You're welcome. I think it's a great idea, maybe I can work with staff if they're open to the idea on what the terms of reference are, because I think it's good for council to know exactly what we're doing. I think I laid out a good idea, but again, sometimes I need to be reined in a little bit. We can come up, and then we can come up with, like, this is the plan, two staff members, members from Kanuma, like, industry, et cetera, et cetera. We can get it all down in paper, so then we have a template also to follow.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree. Any other comments, questions? Called a question, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Counselor Norbury, anything else?
That's a good start. I guess in continuing with the numbers, number three, we've already been talking about incentives, what's, can, normally we don't make decisions on nights that we have delegations in, is it appropriate for us to discuss these incentives and make motions at this time?
I would say so. I don't think there's any, any benefit for us in waiting on this issue, I think this is a very serious issue. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd like to make a recommendation that the district of Tumbler Ridge offer janitorial services to the Tumbler Ridge Children's Care Society.
After our?
After.
After our janitorial service? Seconder? I'll second, discussion? Counselor Howe?
So will this free up some money for them, do you think, Counselor Norbury, to use on wages? Or is this just decreasing workload?
Counselor Norbury?
Decreasing workload, aiding in their mental health, they've lost a few staff members recently, and workload is definitely a bit large portion for them. From their own delegation, they said this is something we need in the short term to aid us in going. I mean, if this is, you know, staff are already there, they can be before hours, after hours, whatever. If we can lighten that load on them, if we can keep that staff member a little bit longer, it's worth a shot.
Are you aware of any overtime being paid for this janitorial work? Counselor?
I can only speak in my, so when I was there, it was a part of my duties, and you just figured it out.
Sucked it up.
But I mean, in comparison to what I'm doing now, the time that I was spent cleaning, I could have been spending more time on researching how I can better?
And programming.
Better programming, right, so.
True. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So that would be a couple hours a day, every day of the week? I mean, that will add up, that cost does add up, and I think it can be part of a job description, I think that money could be used better in other area. That's my own opinion. I still, that's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Majinsky, just one moment here, we got some sound issues with you there. Ms. Butters, is there anything we can do there?
He just has to talk about it.
Okay.
Is it coming from the computer? Like, do we need to turn the computer speakers up? Because I don't think it's coming through the TV.
It should be, it was before. Oh, yeah.
Okay, one second here, Counselor, we'll see what we can do here.
Hang on, one second.
Yeah, so to go along with what Counselor Kirby said, like, do we have any idea on cost on this? If we're talking two hours a day, five days a week, what's the janitorial wage, almost thirty dollars an hour with benefits? We're talking, is that seven hundred dollars a week?
For one person, it's likely going to be two, I would say. Ms. Torval, can you shed some light on that, if you have?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm not able to shed any light on this at this time, I would need to consider consulting staff and see what the implications are.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kirby?
Just another solution could be contract to work out outside of the DTR, but because we're in a, because we're in the community center in our facility, does that have to be done in-house?
I would.
By our own staff?
As per union, I would assume, Ms. Torval?
Yeah, again, something I would need to research further to see what implications may or may not be, it may be something that, you know, could be contracted out, or our staff could do it, maybe, I'm not sure at this point.
Okay, Counselor Howe?
Okay, so based on one employee, that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year, two employees is seventy-two thousand dollars a year. So what I think Counselor Kirby is getting at is we could probably utilize that money better. I'm talking about giving them ten thousand dollars to figure out what they need to do to hire more people, you know, this is seventy-two thousand dollars we're talking about, that's how quickly this stuff adds up, right? So, and that is why I have no inclination for the DTR to take over childcare services and be a union wage and all this other stuff, that needs to stay as a society the way it is. But giving ten or twelve thousand dollars sure looks a lot better than seventy-two thousand dollars at this point. So because of that, I am not in favor of it at this point, because I don't understand the full implications of it, that's just too costly. Our money is spent better by giving the money to them and saying, yeah, it's part of your job, but here's a little bit more for doing your job.
Yeah, I agree, I'm a bit on the fence at this point, just because I don't think we have enough information, possibly a report from staff would be appreciated just to add to the information bank, I guess. Counselor Majinsky?
Can you hear me?
You betcha, there we go.
Okay. No, I have the same concerns Counselor Howe had, in regards to the cost implications on, and the hours, on how much it would take to do the cleaning, so if it's going to be that much, and you're going to continue down the road with the, the support of doing the recreation passes and stuff like that, you know, it's all going to add up quite a bit, I think, over time, so I'm still kind of leaning towards more of a district run. There is definitely a lot more positives than having a delegation come back all the time, looking for funding, and not being able to operate, and this could be a more consistent long-term viable option with district run, but we can discuss that once we get to the recreation passes debate as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Nothing at this time.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Called a question on the motion? All in favor? Opposed? Defeated? Defeated, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd like to make a motion that we request a report in options for aiding the Tumbler Ridge Society, the Children's Center Society, for options to offer janitorial services.
With cost implications?
With, as amended.
Not amended, just added. Seconder? Counselor Lehman, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Let's talk, um... Talk, let's talk um, benefit passes. Um, what's everyone's thoughts about offering, starting with the ECEs, um, current EC, current um, employees that have the early childhood educator qualification and potential incoming? I think that would aid in their um. Advertising. In that, hey, you come work for us, you get a free pass to the gym, to the pool, um. To the ice rink when it's open. Doesn't doesn't uh, cost us anything other than maintenance on machines that an average user would use, right? So I think it's a very reasonable option.
Counsel Hal?
Uh, I'm, I mean, if you're going to put that motion on the floor, I'll second it.
Okay. I'd like to add my two cents there. Um. I can't say I'm really in favor of this type of an incentive, because I think we're losing um, the purpose of that incentive at the very beginning. That incentive was for medical professionals to show our appreciation uh, at a time where we were hurting um, to to try and and continue the service. Uh, that was offered here in the community. Um. But now we've also moved on to appreciating the RCMP, appreciating the fire department. Um. As well as search and rescue, so we've we've kind of combined this recreation and golf pass to emergency services. Which I think is um, uh. Good. You know, we certainly want to appreciate uh, all the the time and effort that these people do to to create a safe space for us in in our community. But I think if we move on to education and we're looking at ECE uh, incentives. We're going to have the high school and the um, elementary school coming to us saying, we have. For example, a number of teachers retiring, we're having trouble trying to fill these positions, we need to find ways to incentivize. What do you think about recreation passes? There is no end to this. We certainly, as council, want to appreciate all of our teachers, all of our doctors, all of our nurses, all of our firefighters. There will be no end to this. So in my opinion, I believe that the um, recreation pass benefit should stay within the emergency services. Counsel Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, let's do it, teachers! You just opened the door, let's do it! Um, and that's the point where I'm willing to go, I mean, I think this, we have services in our community, we can offer as incentives to fill the gap. And that's where I see um. The, what, all those things that you mentioned, we need firefighters, we need, we need all these things. And this is a tool in our toolbox to aid in retention, in recruitment. I think this is, and as I said, it's a tool, and this tool we can retool into um, getting a positive result. So um, I'd like to make a motion that we offer um. Oh.
Yeah, I better be specific on this one.
I may refer back to the notes here. Um, recreation pass benefits for the gym, the pool, and the ice rink. To qualified ECE professionals at the Children's Center. That are currently working there and potential. Future candidates with the ECE qualification.
Okay, second or? Counsel Hal? Discussion? Counsel Hal?
I I agree with Counselor Norbury, I think this is, again. That's the the whole intent, the whole point of these passes is to do things like this, and you're right, it it may open the doors to the government of British Columbia. Paid employees to come in and say, geez, we want recreation passes because we can't get anybody either. This is different, right, that that's who pays the wages of teachers. That is not who pays the wages of early childhood educators. You know, that this is on the backs of those families that have to put money in to to get the kids paid, this is not the government, this is a government's issue. If they can't get teachers from Tumbler Ridge, yes, we can probably have to do things with that to help them here. But we're having two teachers telling us, we're leaving because we don't have childcare, not because of the government. Because they don't have childcare. And to me, this is a small thing, this is, you know, how many ECEs they got there? They have five total employees, what, they got two or three ECEs? And we could maybe potentially help to get one? The big benefit for this to me, though, is the leveraging that this supplies to them to go when they write letters to the government. We're in that bad of a way in Tumbler Ridge when they write this letter, and they can get help from staff to write the letter if they want it. But we're in that bad of a way in the DTR, we need to increase the amount in fees that we charge, because we can't get anybody, it's that bad. We went to the District of Tumbler Ridge and they gave us free recreation passes, and they gave us this and gave us that. So they can utilize that to leverage the opportunity to increase their wages, that or or fees. And that, to me, is a huge reason why we should give that to them.
Absolutely, I I don't disagree. Um, doctors and nurses are hired by the government too, but we decided to step in as well, so. Um. Yeah, it's.
Mayor, okay?
It's a tough one. Counsel Majinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm not in favor of uh, supporting the motions on the floor this evening. Uh, I'd like to see more options available before I start voting in favor of uh, recreation pass benefits. Um, I really do truly feel that we should look at the cost implications of actually running it. Because the District of Tumbler Ridge employees, they also get a a yearly benefit uh, to for recreation. Then they can spend it on what they choose, so that's another uh, factor that you could uh, put into this as well, instead of just doing a a free recreation to the golf and uh, community center. So they could utilize that money elsewhere. Just another thought, and I think that we should really look at more options before we just start voting on stuff in favor.
Yeah, I agree with you. Counsel Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. So Counsel Majinsky, um. It sounds like you you want to take over the the Children's Center, which is fine, but that's that's not tomorrow. We make this motion today, they get they get passes tomorrow. And there, we can add into all the advertising that we're doing for them. Hey, also, if you move to Tumbler Ridge, you get access to the pool, access to the rink, access to whatever. You know, if we take over the Children's Center, who knows what that would look like? I can't see us taking it over in a week, a month, two months. This could be a multi-phase approach, if that's even something um, you know, council approves on. So that, you're talking a maybe, we're talking what we can do right now, today. And I think that's where we're at, right now.
Mayor, okay?
Uh, Counsel Hal first?
Uh, yeah, I I echo what Counsel Norbury is saying, this is a solution for right now, and this is something that can be taken back. You know, if we make the wrong decision on it, then we decide to take over the childhood or childcare center through the DTR, yeah, that changes it. But we could do this right now, this is something that's quick, easy, done, doesn't cost us very much. It's uh, a a very simple thing to do, but what Counsel Majinsky is saying, and I I would hope that he would vote in favor of this. Because he said, what his comment was, is I'm not going to vote in favor of this, because I want us to look at taking over the childcare center. Well, I think he should vote in favor of this, and then we can look at taking over the childcare center. But from my opinion, right now, to take over the childcare center, first thing comes to mind, union wages. So our wages go through the friggin roof to 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 be able to, everybody's going to be thirty, forty, fifty bucks an hour. So the amount of money that's going to come out of residents' pockets to pay for that, we'll never be able to recoup that in 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 costs. And to to be quite honest with you, the DTR's got too much on its plate as it is. We're doing a lot of things poorly right now. We need to pick our socks up and do a lot of smaller things better, that is a huge project to take that on. We have a working group in place, it's working, they just need a little help to get them over a a a lump right now, this is a small thing to try. This costs us enough, this is ridiculous to vote against this.
Yeah, I, just to clarify, I think Counsel Majinsky had mentioned that he's not in favor of this at this time, because he he would like to see more options as far as incentives go. And I'm in the same boat, I I would like to give the working group an opportunity to um, have a better look at some other types of incentives. And maybe come with a recommendation as a group. Um, Counsel Majinsky?
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, and and to negotiate union contracts isn't going to take months and months. A working group? I haven't seen a working group yet that has resolved something within two months. So to say that having a working group that's going to be effective and fast to resolve all these issues with uh, the wages and benefits and everything else, I don't think that's going to happen. We're looking at a lot of money to fund this, and either way, it's going to be either by a a donation or a little bit here and there. But we're we're going to see this happen year after year. Um, we probably have everything on record of what it costed us in the past, and what we supplied, and how many employees we employed when we did operate at one point. So I would be curious to see all those facts and numbers and then apply them to current uh, wages and 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 benefits to current times and go from there. And yes, I do agree that we could do the temporary patch of giving them the benefit of recreation passes, but. That's not going to be, that's not a long-term solution. And it, I don't, I don't see it viable, because that's not going to keep somebody here if they're only making seventeen dollars an hour with no benefits. And that's the biggest thing, is you have these trained professionals for a long period of time, and they go to school to do this, and then. Why would they be here when they could be in Alberta or South of DC and making a lot more money?
Do you think, Counsel Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, try to only speak on new information, I get, sometimes I go back on it. But maybe Counsel Lehman can um. You know, uh, back me up or tell me I'm wrong, but there was a nurse in our, in our um. In our health center. Who was a was a traveling locum nurse, and they told us, I'm pretty sure Counsel Lehman was with me. And like, the reason why they are now a part of the district, oh, excuse me, not the district, a part of Northern Health for Tumbler Ridge is because of the benefits that we gave them. Like, it was, they came here and they could not believe that the District of Tumbler Ridge gave them these um. Benefits when they came in as as um, locums, and they decided to stay. Like, that was the reason, that right there, and we have an opportunity to potentially do that for an ECE. And.
Uh, I correct you on that, because that's my neighbor, and that's because of the quality of life and the workload, the workload balance, so that's also a benefit there, so. I, if you don't get that in other, so. Not just because of what we're doing there, that is definitely.
It was a piece!
So, 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 yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Counsel Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, I don't think it's ridiculous to vote against this, for one, I, but I do think it's good to talk about.
Counsel Hal, please. Counsel Hal?
It's, it's good to talk it out, and 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 of course, we want to, you know, you know, do our part. I mean, I'm, I was thinking more scholarships and and educational, uh, you know. Looking at upgrading and stuff like that, and this could be part of it, but I I do think it looks better when we, when we see the bigger picture of how we can help out. What we did for the nurses and doctors, is it going to make what we did for them less, less of what we did because now we're hiring, giving it to everyone? I don't know. Yes, we could do this, we could do do this tonight because. Because we give so many things away for free, but it is important, it's not saying that we, if we vote against this, that we're not concerned and we don't want to do. Do the best that we can to support. But I'd like to see more of the report when we first sit down and have the first, you know, meeting and see what other things we can put together. So I'm not in favor of voting for it tonight.
Yeah, I think that's where I stand as well, I I certainly think it's a interesting idea as an incentive, but I, at this time, I I'm not in favor of of um. Voting in favor of this, because I would like to see more options from the working group. You know, a month down the road, and if the working group comes back with a list of five different options and the passes is within that option. Certainly, you know, they've given some thought to it, but they've also given some thought to other incentives, so. Um, I just feel like if we, if we keep giving out these passes to everyone that we want to appreciate. We might as well not charge a dime for the entire community center, because that's where we're going. You know, we certainly don't make a lot of revenue at the community center, but. Why don't we want to appreciate all of our residents? Counsel Hal?
Here, take mine back, here's mine, boom, there's one, take care. This doesn't cost us anything, you guys, this is nothing, this is three people. Come on. Like, like, either you, these people just sat in here, poured their hearts out, they're volunteer-based, telling us what they need, we're trying to give them something to try to help get employees here. Give them mine, take mine off, give it to them, that's one they can use right there.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand, so, you know, um. If um, if other councils feel more um. Comfortable waiting for, you know, this new task force to come up with these ideas and incentives. Um. I foresee this being one of them, right? So my thought is, we can wait for this working group, and it's going to take, it's going to take a while. Unfortunately, this is a medium-term, long-term solution, this isn't short-term. I can almost guarantee you, this will come back to council at some point. So do we want to wait for then, or do we want to go on, you know, what we have in front of us now? I mean, I think it's okay to make the decision now, because it's going to come back eventually, so it's either going to come back via. A group suggestion, we're going to have to make the decision then, or make the decision now, I think it makes sense that um, we have an opportunity to do more now. Um, but fair enough.
Well, and there's also different perspectives um, within that working group as well, like you were talking about consistency of. School District Fifty-nine, and some other um, representation there. I would be curious to know what School District Fifty-nine would be um, of opinion of giving out these passes to ECEs and how they feel. Uh, that may trickle to School District Fifty-nine. Um, that's the reason for a working group, is collaboration. Bringing more than one head together and coming up with solutions, or possible solutions to recommend to council, and I think. In my opinion, that's the right way to go. I certainly agree with you, Counsel Hal, this is nothing, but. The the repercussions of the, of of that could spill out, we haven't, we haven't really examined any repercussions, we're just thinking about giving out passes. Um. I also feel that. Expanding the recreation pass benefit takes away from the original intent of those passes. At the very beginning, that I believe that you brought forward for our emergency services. Um. So that's why I can't support it tonight. Counsel Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I was not a big fan when we first started giving out more and more passes, because I seen, it seemed like it's kind of a. It becomes watered down. But, I mean. The report that the uh, Children's Society did on this, I think was. Pretty well done, and I think they probably gave a lot of thought. And this is one of the things they came up with, so. It's only. I guess, I guess, doesn't really matter the number of people. I'm not. A great fan of having more and more passes given out, but I can see it in this, because. It has a ripple effect, like Counsel Hal said, you know, you lose, you lose childcare, and then you lose these people, you lose these people. And it just. It snowballs, and I'd, I'd rather give out these passes than have something like that, you know, happen, and and we keep losing these people that we desperately need. You know, it, I don't, it's. No matter which way you go, it, you know, there's. Could be repercussions, but I think for this, I'm willing to let it go, because I I just think the benefits will outweigh the uh, the harm.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Kirby?
Counsel Lehman, you changed my mind.
Okay, call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. Any other um, motions, Counsel Norbury? Counsel Norbury?
I'd like to bring up the discussion about um. Um, having a potential onboarding group, like like you were mentioning earlier, like, do we need to set aside funds? Should we put this as a um, responsibility of the working group to meet with potential candidates? Um, because I think that makes a huge difference, we we put a day, they can come in, Dr. Hal can take them to the trackway and take them out to dinner with council. Um. Yeah, I'm I'm not sure of how we can engage that um, type of action, do we need to make a motion for council to release funds? Yeah. What's there more thoughts, staff, maybe you can help us out?
No, I I certainly like that idea, the onboarding, you know, I did offer to the Children's Center that um. Mayor and council certainly would like the opportunity to uh, tour any potential candidates. Uh, I agree, I think it makes a huge difference, it it shows the personability and the community of, or the spirit of the community. And um. I think it's a good idea. Um. Ms. Torval, I know we have a budget in regards to welcoming healthcare professionals. That we can't be anywhere close to being used all of, is there a way that we can create an onboarding? Um, type of a policy sort of thing? Ms. Torval?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm just gonna, I just gotta confirm something with the, my client has.
Certainly.
Okay, so you have a, a council initiatives budget?
Right. Right.
And so I could confirm there?
Right. Okay, so we don't need to cert, set out a certain, um, dollar amount for this?
I don't know if you want to put a cap to it. You may, but it's entirely up to you.
From what I remember, I think we were at twenty-five hundred in that budget?
Sorry?
Twenty-five hundred, I believe, was budgeted?
There's more than that, yeah. There is more than that.
Yeah, I, I think it's plenty.
I want to say thirty thousand, but, but it's in that vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Norbury?
Looks like helicopter rides are on the menu. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, maybe. Um-
I don't know if we want you on that board or not.
That's why I said it's important to have staff bring it down. Staff is the calmer head.
True.
No, I'm kidding. Um, so with that, um, I know that we have been currently assisting in advertising positions. Is there any way that we can assist more? Um, yeah, my, I'm, I'm kind of curious on, on staff's side of the things if, um, if there's any way we can connect them into our networks that we advertise for, or if we're doing everything that we can, or if there, are there any other options? That we can help them?
Uh, Ms. Torval, you know, I, I, when I think about it as far as staff goes, I think this could be an integral part of economic development to some degree. Um, I'm curious on your thoughts. Ms. Torval?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, through the council. Uh, we could certainly use our advertising, uh, methods that we use. Uh, we employ a number of them. We use, we do LinkedIn, we do, we have our Civic Info, uh, Civic Web that we, uh, Civic Info website with job postings, um, plus other ones as well that we could use. Indeed, we could do those. Or, you know, there are costs associated, but we could, uh, do the, do it for them.
So, a motion to assist the children's center in-
Staff recruitment.
Staff recruitment, advertising would be, would be appropriate?
Yes.
Motioned?
As, as presented. Ms. Torval?
Through council initiatives budget?
Yeah.
As amended?
I think, I think we better have that read back, please.
Um, mayor and council, the motion was to assist TR CCS and staff recruitment advertising through the council initiatives budget.
Okay. Okay with that? Moved by Councilor Norbury, seconded, or seconder? All seconded. Discussion? Councilor Norbury?
The reason why I, I think this is important is that they are losing their economic development officer. They don't have, like, Kanumba's going to be assisting them as well. Um, but there's only so much we can ask for of volunteer boards, and I think we already have existing mechanisms to advertise. Um, it's only gonna cost us a little bit of staff time, and if it gets to ECEs, worth it.
Yeah, just to clarify, you mentioned economic development officer, but you're meaning executive director of the children's center?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I didn't want to put any more on me there, phrase.
Abigail's a good time, so, raise a little more.
Okay, so just to clarify, we, this motion is in regards to advertising for, um, uh, recruitment. Uh, it's not capturing any type of onboarding that you were speaking of, so just wanted to clarify that. Councilor Kirby?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. Will we have a budget to this, or is it, are we gonna get updated? Is it gonna be paper? Is it social media?
Ms. Torval?
Social media mostly, social media, uh, through LinkedIn, Civic Web as well, website, so.
Follow-up? And then as far as, um, ongoing reporting, you, you had mentioned that as well?
Just so we have, so we know what's being spent?
Ms. Torval?
We'll have the budget, uh, budget implications and what you've got remaining and what we're after date, sort of thing.
Updated quarterly kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Um, you know, Councilor Norbury, I think maybe possibly the onboarding discussion or welcoming package could be part of the working group as well. And maybe, um, you know, put together a fulsome, um, uh, recommendation to bring back to council possibly. Councilor Norbury?
And my hope is that when we get that group going, we could be the ones that can organize that type of thing, just like the mayor's task force handles the medical professionals. Uh, that being said, there could be people coming in soon, right? So it's, you know, wha, in the meantime, while we get this going, it's good to have something now, right? That's, that's my thought. But I, I think that is something we can take with the working group and we can set a budget there just so we can, we can, you know, get a, get a defined term and what we're, what we're working with versus just unbudgeted carte blanche.
A little bit more specific.
And I think, I think the same thing with the, the travel allowance thing. Um, that's something we could be looking at, and, um, again, I think it's a good idea to come up with budgets, get a little more budgetary implications and stuff like that.
A little bit more thought to it, yeah. I think that's a good idea. Okay, any other comments, questions, any other motions? Okay, I think we have covered that. Council wish to take a quick recess? Bio-break at all, or push through? Push through, okay. All right, nine point two. Appointment of temporary approving officer, a report from the acting CAO dated June sixth, twenty-twenty-two, requesting the appointment of a temporary approving officer. Recommendation, please. Councilor Norbury?
The council appoints Dustin Curry, Protector of Protective Services Fire Chief, as the temporary approving officer for the District of Tumbler Ridge.
Seconder? Councilor Kirby? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Uh, it was Mr. Simcock before. And before that, it was Mr. Beal. Nine point three, Tumbler Ridge Fire Department Annual Report, a report from the Director of Protective Services dated June sixth, twenty-twenty-two, providing the Tumbler Ridge Fire Department Annual Report. Recommendation, please. Councilor Kirby?
In consideration of time, this is a great report, but I'll move for information.
Okay, seconder? Councilor Lehman? Discussion on motion of information, Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd just like to know if, um, staff present would like to speak to this at all? I mean, it is, it is their report, and I'd hate for us to receive information if they're jazzed up and want to talk about fire services. So, I love hearing about it. I tend to read GM a year.
Ms. Torval?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I'll ask Chief Curry if he feels to do some jazzing out his report.
Mayor and council, I, I appreciate Councilor Kirby's kind words with the report. Um, I'll let the report stand for, for what it is. Um, a lot of it is factual. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer councils. And Curry, if there's any time.
Okay, thank you. Call the question on motion for information. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Thank you very much, uh, Chief Curry, for that, uh, information. It's, uh, always appreciated. And fantastic job on the, um, response time, just over four minutes. That's incredible. Nine point four, Bell Media Inc. Lease Renewal, a report from the Deputy Director of Corporate Services dated June sixth, twenty-twenty-two, seeking approval of the Bell Media Inc. Lease Renewal. Recommendation, please. Councilor Kirby?
That council authorizes the mayor and corporate officer to sign a renewal lease with Bell Media Incorporated for a five-year term beginning September fourth to, uh, twenty-twenty-two to August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, at an annual rate of four hundred dollars plus tax for the use of lot, a district lot three-one-six-four, Peace River Regional District Plan two-eight-six-zero-eight.
Seconder? Councilor Lehman? Discussion? Ms. Torval, where exactly is this lot?
Mayor and council, this is located, uh, next to the water tower.
Next to the water tower.
On district property.
Okay, thank you. And just a clarification on the recommendation, it says mayor and corporate officer. I'm wondering if it should say mayor and intern CAO, or does that matter? Corporate officer, okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Nine point five, alternative recommendations for the provisions of food and beverage services at the golf course following an expression of interest. Report from the Director of Economic Development and Tourism dated June sixth, twenty-twenty-two to provide the results and a recommendation from the EOI process. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I'd like to move for discussion.
Seconder, Councilor Ker, Ker, sorry, Councilor Kirby?
I'm gonna remove myself because I have a concert because I have a family member working at the-
Certainly, thank you. Seconder for motion for discussion. Councilor Lehman, all in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I did have one point I'd like to ask on, and it's the lease proposal. Um, I believe they're offering a term of fifteen hundred dollars a month, including lease property tax and all, all utilities and phone lines. I apologize, but does that mean that they're gonna give us fifteen hundred bucks and that includes all of that? But they gave us fifteen hundred dollars, plus they're gonna pay us property tax, plus you're gonna take over utilities and phones?
Ms. Torval?
Just fifteen hundred dollars plus three hundred dollars for the beverage cart.
Councilor Norbury?
Thank you. What's our cost on utilities and phone lines?
So, my head has not, not off the top of my head, and I have asked for a breakdown of this. I mean, I have some figures on, like, the different scenarios, but I haven't got all of the costs for the, uh, obviously the utilities. So.
Okay. Um, from what I recall, the last lease, I believe, was at thirty-five hundred dollars a month. Um, but I, I can't recall whether or not that included, uh, utilities or not. Ms. Torval?
Thirty-eight hundred dollars?
Thirty-eight?
Plus property taxes.
Plus taxes? So utilities were included in that thirty-eight? They were responsible for paying the own, their own utilities, or we were, we paid the utilities? Council, sorry, Ms. Torval?
And this year, they were, uh, sorry, this year, the last year that the last operator was in there, uh, was in two thousand and nineteen, and they were open, I think, through till December that year.
Yeah, for Christmas parties, I think they're very extended, extended the lease there. Councilor Norbury, any follow-up?
Yeah, and just, I just, my thoughts on that is, I want to have somebody down there. Um, I think it's a way for them to make money, but at the same time, I don't think, um, operations down there can come at a cost to us, is my only thought. So I, I, I think, I think we should get, like, a cost of what our utilities are before we say, yeah, fifteen hundred bucks covers it. Because what if we're paying, you know, sixteen hundred bucks in utilities down there? I know, I don't think it's that much, but, yeah.
It certainly could be with the increase in natural gas. Councilor Howe?
The one thing that strikes me in here is, I, I too, I think it'd be awesome to have somebody down in there again. And we threw this out for anybody to come in with any idea, to see if it was worth looking at. But the part that sticks out to me is the potential loss of the district revenue from the beverage cart, approximately thirty-one thousand dollars in net revenue based on two thousand twenty-one revenue, less expenses to purchase the stock. Well, like, five bucks a beer. Beer doesn't even cost you two fifty a beer, so you're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen thousand dollars that we make off the, uh, golf cart, off the beverage cart. So, you know, to me, that, whoever's coming in to take this over should be able to recognize, I can make that much money on the beer cart. So there, it's not quite enough for me, honestly. It's, it needs to be a little, little bit higher than this. And without knowing the costs on utilities and stuff like that, I, I just, I'm not in favor at this point.
Yeah, I, I do think we need more information here. Um, at first glance, it is a little bit low in, in that regard, um, especially including the beer carts as well. Um, but we don't have any cost information here, and, and, you know, we, we need to have the whole picture, I think. Um, I, I certainly appreciate the, um, proposal. And, and I, I am committed to trying to, to bring another operator down there, but, uh, I think we have enough information here. Um, any other comments, questions? Councilor Lehman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering how we're doing on the liquor license for golf courses. Or have we pursued anything on, on that regard?
Ms. Torval?
Yes, we should know this week. The approval should be given this week. I spoke with the inspector today. We're at the expecting stage, and, uh, when I talked with her today, uh, she was, she knows we're in the north. And she said, those people in Vancouver, they don't know what they're doing down there. They think it's all the same. And she said, we're gonna, she's not gonna give them a college oral, actually, the caseworker on our, on our license application, and, uh, just tell them to go ahead and approve, so I'm expecting by the end of the week, we'll have our license in hand.
Good. Follow-up?
And thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, so, yeah, I, I too would like to see a little bit more, like, on what the utilities are, just so we can get an idea, you know, at least cover that and then, you know, go from there.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Norbury?
Does this seem to be binary? Yes, no, um, discussion? Can we potentially go back and say to them, like, look, this is our, can we have a negotiation here, do you think? In that, like, hey, you're, you're, I mean, we need to, we need to cover our costs, we want you to do well, but at the same time, what about, what about profit sharing, right? You know, do an eighty-twenty like we do with, um, RV Park and, you know, in addition to covering our costs, right? Like, is there a flavor there? Then what's everyone's thought?
Well, it's, it's certainly a possibility, but without the cost information, we can't really make a, a decision here. So I'm, I'm thinking that we need to, um, move an, an expansion to the report to some degree. I, I'm, Ms. Torval, I'm not sure what you'd like to do here.
Um, yeah, uh, I guess we should have maybe did a more, a little more research. We were trying to find, get this information together. Uh, but, uh, again, this was an expression of interest that we put out and, uh, see what interest we would garner. And so this was the only submission that we received. And so we said, well, we'll bring it to council and see where it goes from there. So you're entirely, if you want to negotiate with this operator, potential operator, that's, you know, up to you, whatever council desires.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I certainly think, uh, a negotiation could be possible if we find out that fifteen hundred dollars doesn't cover the gas bill. So it, it's certainly, um, you know, within the expression of interest and proponents that did apply or, or look into this, did we provide them with any kind of cost information? No? Okay. Other than property ta, okay, thank you. Um, any other comments, questions? So I, I don't really want to lose this, um, proposal. I, I just would like to bring it back with more cost implications and, and, and history. So how would you like to proceed in, in that regard? Motion to-
If you would like to do a motion to bring back more information.
Okay. I'll, I'll like to make that motion that, uh, council directs staff to bring back more cost implication, um, on this proposal. Seconder, Councilor Howe? Discussion? Councilor Howe?
You know, I think we should also include in there that we should enter, like, in some negotiations with the proponent. Like, uh, they need to, I, like, do they get the information that you could potentially make sixteen thousand dollars profit off of beverage cart? That's four months, that's four thousand dollars a month you can make off the beer cart, right? So, yeah, that's a great deal. I'll give you fifteen hundred, you give me twenty-five hundred, and I'll cruise around on the beer cart all, all summer long, right? Like, they don't even have to run the restaurant, and they can make twenty-five hundred dollars on this. So, so, so to me, there, that negotiation needs to be had with them to say, hey, this is the potential of the beer cart, just so you know. This is what council is debating on. So she needs to have that information as well of more than just, oh, the utilities came to this and we're still interested in the fifteen hundred dollars per month.
Certainly, certainly, I agree. And, and that's part of, when it does come back, it will be, uh, presented, and I think it should be presented on both sides, for sure. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Maginski, did you have anything? Okay. Call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Nine point six, ammonia upgrade and recovery project, arena heat floor header and cold brine charge. Oh, yes, thank you. Just on a roll here.
Ready for your boss?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Nine point six, ammonia upgrade and recovery project, arena heat floor header and cold brine charge, report from the director of community and human resources dated June six, twenty twenty-two, to request additional funds to replace arena heat floor headers, mains and cold brine charge. Recommendation, please. Counselor Hall?
Council approves the unbudgeted funds in the amount of sixty thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and five cents to replace the arena heat floor headers, main and cold brine charge.
Seconder. Counselor Lehman, discussion? Just, Counselor Lehman?
Thank you. I just think this is one of those things that we find out, you know, you, you start opening up things and you find out, you know, it's a bigger job than you thought. So it's unfortunate, but I think it needs to be done.
Yeah, absolutely. For almost a two million dollar project, I don't think we can put old pipe and rusty pipe in the ground still. So certainly necessary, I understand that. Just curious, Ms. Torvald, on the math. We talked about this previously, thirty-four thousand and, and the fifteen thousand and plus the seventy-five hundred, it looks to be about twenty-five hundred short to the sixty thousand. Can you explain where that total funds required number came from, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and counsel. I did some of that research and found out that thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-eight plus fifteen, six, seventy-three plus G S T equals fifty-two thousand, seven hundred, thirty-two and five cents plus seventy-five hundred will give you your sixty thousand, two thirty-two oh five. And I'm not a math person.
G S T, bloody G S T. That's why. Okay, thank you very much. I, I figured it had to be something because there was no reason to put in five cents there. So, okay, perfect. Okay, that was my only question. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. All right. Schedule of meetings. Any issues there, counsel? Staff, any issues, schedule meetings, Ms. Torvald?
Thank you. As you know, we're doing the zoning law and there are engagement sessions required. And so I'm putting it to council tonight to see if you would like to do, schedule in a workshop during the daytime and then have a public consultation in the evening. And I know it's been a while since council has held a town hall meeting, like a let's talk. So I just want to put it out there, if you would want to entertain the idea of maybe having a let's talk or not a good time right now, but just to do a public engagement for the zoning bylaw with W S P, they would come to town for this, to Tumbler Ridge, and then we would do a public engagement later on, on that same visit that they are here. So just putting it out there.
When were you thinking of, of holding this public engagement for the zoning bylaw?
It would be nice if we could do it in June sometime, or June or July. It's, it would be up to, up to council, whatever your flavor.
Counsel? Counselor Lehman? Counselor Hall?
What day is grad again?
Twenty-fourth.
Yes.
I'm thinking it might be best to do it in June as July, there's usually a mass exodus on holidays. It's just for maximum attendance, possibly the week of the thirteenth in June?
Week?
Next week? That's a little soon. Or the last week after grad? Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I, I know we got to do it quickly. Week of grad, I think, is a wash. It's not possible because everyone's focused somewhere else. I think the week after is best in that we could, we need to advertise and, you know, it takes, takes time getting word out there. Sometimes the trickle of word of mouth is, so maybe that, that week between the twenty-seventh and the first, I mean, we don't have a council meeting on the twenty-seventh. Could we do it on the twenty-seventh?
Quite possibly. Ms. Torvald? Twenty-seventh? So you were thinking of a workshop with W S P, with council?
Yes, so they would come in and do a workshop similarly to as they did with the O C P.
To try and get council's perspective?
Yes.
Okay. Any issues there, counsel, for the twenty-seventh? I think my availability during the day could be in question for that day, but evening I should be available. Counselor Kirby?
I will be away.
That whole week? That whole week? Counselor Hall?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I know the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
But I can call.
Yeah, that's an oper- that's a possibility as well to call in.
Yeah, I believe before, when they did the engagement, did they not reach out to council's individually as well?
Yeah, I do. So that's oppor- opportunity as well. Okay, I, I do think we should possibly try for the twenty-seventh. Maybe the workshop may not work, but if they could reach out to us individually for that input, that could probably suffice. But then the night of the twenty-seventh, have the public engagement possibly? Does that sound okay? Ms. Torvald? Okay. All right, any other items for schedule of meetings? Okay, notice of motions this evening? Any notice of motions? Okay, council's business. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. I did want to update council on a couple of committees that I'm part of. First up, the South Peace Health Services Society. Think we're almost there.
Really?
Almost there. Mayor Baumstead is one heck of a human being and he's, and he's got us a bunch of money. So we are looking, once, once funding's released, we should be looking at about four hundred fifty thousand dollars in the bank, which means we should be finished by fall. Said that before, but, you know, Mayor Dale's on it. So we, so we're, we're looking at fall completion. Next up, we're going to be looking at operations, like how can we actually operate it? What funding are we looking at? I did just get an email earlier that we have entered in an arrangement with Northern Health that we are going to be leasing the carriage house to Northern Health for Doctor State. So we are generating income there. I mean, maybe that's an opportunity for us, the district, I don't know. So we having our A G M tonight, unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but I'm still going to be a director. And we are going to be working on getting a marketing team to create a brochure or informational pamphlet to give to our potential investors. So, you know, we're going to need to fundraise regular money to, to keep the doors open to offer cheap or affordable housing while people are in Dawson Peak. So fortunately, that's a costly thing. There are organizations that can run it for us, but we got to pay them. So that is that. And the other thing I want to mention is the Building Healthy Communities Committee. We have a date. We're going to be meeting in two weeks. So I'm just looking at having a preliminary, preliminary discussion with the, the committee, what are our needs in our community. Dr. Riffey has concerns about bad drugs being blown to our community. So like, that's something maybe we can take a bite out of. Maybe we can talk to the R C M P about getting the, the D A R program going or, or bring in a speaker or something to talk about drugs. Derek, no?
I think they, they scrapped Derek.
This year, I believe they weren't able to do it, yeah. Yeah.
It's a new, something, I don't know.
Want to sit on another board, Nikki?
No.
It seems to be a valuable asset.
Any other council's business, counsel?
Always looking for board members, volunteers. No, so I just want to let everybody know that we are going to try to meet again, see what the needs are and, and get refocused because I think it's time to continue on. That's it.
Good work of the committee, absolutely. Thank you. Any other council's business? Okay, thank you. Question, answer, period. Any questions in regards to tonight's agenda by the gallery? Thank you for sticking out with us.
I have a question slash comment. I know of five educators in Tumbler Ridge who are either actively looking for childcare or will be in the next, so do this summer, so looking for childcare. Both of my kids, I have two, grade two and five, their teachers are teachers on a letter of permission, so not qualified in B C as a teacher. The government has given them permission. How are we going to keep people in town if we don't have childcare? Like, you're talking about ten thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars. Why would we stay if our kids can't get educated? I don't need childcare. I need my kids to get an education and that's super important for us. I'd also like to point out that these five educators are, like them and their families, are firefighters, they're safety and rescue members, they're referees, they're part of our community. So I don't think that the district throwing ten thousand dollars is enough. I don't think seventy thousand dollars is enough. I've been on the Children's Center Board for many years. I'm not anymore, but this is super important.
Oh, I completely agree.
And you're not just losing professionals, you're losing other families, like us, if we can't.
Absolutely.
And so I'm not throwing you workers.
No, I, I completely agree and I think all of us recognize the importance of this issue and, and the repercussions of this issue too. I certainly understand.
And I just want to clarify, that's five that I know about. There's only ten teacher positions in elementary school and five.
Yeah, absolutely. Ms. De Mars, any questions? No, thank you. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mayor Bertrand. To, to your question on what are we doing, I think in any situation where there's a problem, there's, you know, we have to have a brainstorming salute, um, time, which I think we've been doing. But it is also important to, whenever we're coming up with solutions, that they are targeted and correct. Because sometimes it's kind of like pouring, you know, a pitcher over a glass of water. It's not, like, what we might be doing may not be effective. So I think we've made good short-term and looking at potential medium and long-term. But I mean, if you have any suggestions, there's a board that you can join and we will be making recommendations to council.
Counselor Norbury, I think that's enough harassment for tonight. Okay. Resolution to close. I'd like to move that the meeting of the district to Tumbler Ridge scheduled for June six, twenty twenty-two be closed pursuant to the community charter provision, section ninety-one, B, C and J. B is personal information about an identifiable individual who is being considered for municipal award or honor or who has offered to provide a gift to the municipality on condition of anonymity. C, labor relations or other employee relations. J, information that is prohibited or information that if it were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under section twenty-one of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Seconder, Counselor Lehman, all in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Ten-minute recess, please.